Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting, City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. We're going to have open with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Holly Murray, followed with the education by Commissioner Tinsley the Third. Please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic we can say that one nation for God.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we're here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented, make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. In your name, amen. All right. Moving into the approval of the agenda as presented, we have a motion to approve. So I move Commissioner Tinsley with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of approval of the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. So tonight, we have an exciting presentation. We are going to recognize Michelle Hanes, Planning Development, Principal Planner, as the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Kelsey Hardin, Staff Attorney, will address.
Long time no see, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm very excited to present this award tonight. So as we discussed today, one of the the biggest accomplishments, in my opinion, from this year has been the number of nuisance cases that we were able to handle. I know that when people think about nuisance, they often think about houses being torn down, and you often probably think it's synonymous with court. But in large part because of Michelle, all the work that goes in on the front end, those two hundred and eighty-six properties, and the letters that she sent out at the time and phone calls that she took the opportunities to make the many very long conversations that we've had in that room during court. Only seven of those two hundred and eighty-six properties that we dealt with this year actually had to have court involvement. And that saves money and time for the city, for the citizens. It also means that we're garnering relationships and hopefully changing the perspective on what nuisance is all about. In addition to all of her work, just in general, she is one of the most supportive people that I've ever met and genuinely my number-one role model when it comes to public service. She's been with the city for seventeen years. She does everything with a smiling face, and she's always proud and happy to be able to volunteer her time in any way that she can, whether it be during the storm or with the water department's Christmas float, or with the Safety Committee and the Safety Expo. She radiates positivity on a regular basis, and we are incredibly, incredibly just blessed to have her, so.
Michelle, if you'd like to make a comment and introduce your family.
Sure. My husband, Brian, is right in the back. He'll come up and speak in a little bit. He's the director of D I S. But good evening. This truly is an honor. Twenty-three was a very hard year for all of us, whether it was the staff, our citizens, our leadership. It was a very difficult year. There are so many of my coworkers that could be up here tonight, that probably should be up here tonight. So it is an honor. It's very difficult when you love a city so much to see it go through such a devastating event. It took minutes to tear down and destroy, and it could take years to rebuild. So it takes all of us. You know, we are rebuilding. It's going to take time, but we one tree at a time, one home at a time, one street at a time, we're going to get there. It takes all of us working together to be able to do that. Cynthia Griffin, I'm just proud that I get to be a part of that team. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you for your service. I know that week following the storm, you were always bouncing, rolling, and assimilating data and information, and because of you and everyone else's effort, we were able to get what we needed to become a federal disaster area, and we are very appreciative, and we are blessed to have you as part of our team.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Kelsey, thank you for the nomination, and congratulations also, Michelle, on getting your masters this past year through all this as well. So we're very proud of you. Moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments related to the specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction. Concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Mission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business or another forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserved the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come forward? Welcome, Dr. Jones. If you keep your name and consider possibly your address.
Dr. Shonda Jones, no address. Is this? I don't feel like this is loud enough. Of course, I'm sure you all knew I was coming because I was with you for the workshop all day today. A couple of things that I want to point out. It was very confusing for citizens because the agenda that was posted online and on the door did not accurately reflect everything that was going to be discussed in your workshop today. And I feel like there would have been many more citizens that would have liked to have been in attendance in order to hear those discussions, and it would have been nice as well if there were some type of video streaming, and not just for that particular meeting, but also for all of your workshop meetings that you do in the morning for people who are at work and cannot attend. So a couple of things about the workshop. There were a lot of instances that I felt were basically tone deaf in a lot of cases, some of the commentary that was made. I want to speak specifically about the portion on gang education and intervention. I don't like to call them gangs. I rather refer to them as misguided youth. I was really disgusted because every time that members of the community have come up here over the years to basically beg and plead for a youth center, for a pool. We've been met with all these blank stares. And basically, oh, well, you know, we're not in the business of recreation, or it's not the government's issue. But now that it's a problem in Third Ward in Maple Drive with cars getting broken into, all of a sudden, everyone is afraid. But when we've been coming up here for years to ask you for these things so that we can get our youth on the right path, and you basically shrug your shoulders, it's disrespectful and it's a slap in the face. And I think you owe an apology to everyone in the community for your lack of initiative when we continue to come here and ask for help. I understand that you talked about funding for a mentorship program and things like that. It's a good idea. I just don't trust it. I don't trust it until you put something in black and white on paper. When we send the email before about the updated strategic plan and asked for things for the youth to be included in there, they're not in there. Everything that we said five years ago that we wanted to do for the youth has not been done. So I don't trust it until we see an actual plan for the youth. Now, I wanted to talk about all of these developments in revitalization efforts, and I kind of touched on it at the last meeting. But the biggest question is, why now? Why now? When you've seen the black for years, when you've seen the substandard housing for years that these slum lords are allowed to throw paint on and allow people to live in that are basically falling apart, they have mold and mildew, and no insulation. Why now? Because what I feel like, and I've said this before, is a combination of a money grab and disaster capitalism. We need to decide what kind of city we want to be. Or the developers that you've invited in are going to do it for us, because that's where it's heading now. And meanwhile, we have commissioners, and I'm not telling anyone anything they don't know, these are open secrets, that are basically lining up to kiss the asses of these developers because they get to make money off of other people's misfortunes. It's easy to see who's doing business, who have these dealings and transactions behind the scene. It's not hard. It's not hard at all. But I don't see these people refraining from voting on these different issues when there's a conflict of interest. Now, there's something else I'd like to address. So the last meeting, when I came up here, and I talked about this five thousand two hundred dollar utility bill, and I stated that citizens had emailed and called the mayor and did not receive a response. Luckily, I was out the door before this commentary was made. But let me tell you something. I said what I said, and I meant what I said. I don't think any of the commissioners should be allowed to utilize their personal email addresses for city business because those are not subject to an open records request. Also, when it comes to a phone call, I can say I didn't get that phone call. You didn't call me. I didn't get it. But there's something called the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. No response to an email or a phone call is not answering and not responding. If someone asks you a specific question or questions, and you don't answer those, that's not answering and not responding. And I shouldn't have to say this. I think this is pretty much common sense. And I want to also ask, since I said what I said at the last meeting about this bill, and you didn't know anything about it supposedly, you've been aware since the last meeting two weeks ago. What did you do? Did you reach out to this young lady? Did you offer her any type of assistance? Did you check with the city manager or city employees to see what they were doing to help? I don't want to have to come up here and address these issues over and over again. But I will say this. If you want to get into a war of wits unarmed, that's completely fine. Because I do have the time, and I do have the crayons to explain to you exactly where and how you can go. And I want to make that clear. So I'll be here for the duration of this meeting, sitting right there in that seat, waiting for your rebuttal to my face this time. So understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come forward? Yes, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record. Name and address, if you don't mind.
Greeting to the panel. Those that are joining us via internet and in person. My name is Orianna, who lives on six one five Lane.
Step up to the bike if you want.
I'm at six.
Orianna.
Orianna.
Orianna, thank you.
Six one five Lane Street. I come tonight to bring attention to the disturbing actions that my family property has encountered. There has been trash deliberately thrown in the yard, items missing or moved around by an unknown individual or group. I have lived in Griffin all my life, and I have never experienced what I have witnessed in the past few weeks. I am not sure what they're looking for, but I would like for the city to be aware of the actions of those that may or may not be from this area. These actions and others have reminded me of when my purse was stolen. The purse had personal information as well as my family's information. I have two boys and a daughter, and it had my mother's information in it as well. She's deceased now. My prayers is that these are not the same people that actually robbed me. At the time, I was employed with the state of Georgia. I spent over ten years working for the state as well as Griffin Spalding County School System until my medical condition became so severe that I had to be wheeled out by a stretcher during two of my tour of duty. It was discovered that along with my previous health conditions, I now have been diagnosed with a neurological disorder. There is work to be done, and I am working to improve that part, which was invested in by my grandparents and parents. I know that I cannot do it alone, and I have been willing to help in the community other ways as well. I go to different places and ask if anybody needs assistance. So I know I can't do this alone, but I want to let the city know that I will be out and about researching, doing what I can to search for valid and updated resources that will help us to restore what is important to family and community. Does anybody on the board have anything, any questions from me at this time?
Thank you, and you can leave your contact information. I'll give this Kelsey Hardin, someone, Miss Kelsey there.
All right.
And we'll have you be able to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on my left side who'd like to come forward? Is there anybody on my right side who'd like to come forward? Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Ray Muhammad, eleven forty-three, Spring Creek Circle. Good evening to all of you. A couple of things that I have, a couple of issues that I have, Mr. Mayor and the Board of Commissioners, our city manager, is clearly that the homeless population in our city, it was cold for the last few days. I call Commissioner Curtis because I can get her. She answered my calls when I reach out to her and asked, was there anything that the city could do to either open the building up to facilitate these individuals who are out here in twenty and zero-degree temperature? Now, you'll tell me that that's not the city's business. You'll tell me that they should go to the Salvation Army, or you'll tell me that that's maybe the church's business. But these individuals, it may be the church's business, and it may be the Salvation Army and the other entities that you may say business it is of, but I would just implore the city that all these buildings that we got, we have, you control city utilities. So it seems to me that we should have more of a compassionate heart when it comes to individuals who are not able to take care of themselves. All of you was very, very, very warm in your houses, probably drinking hot chocolate and maybe drinking some hot tea, but you was very warm, and it seems to me that there's no empathy when it comes to these individuals who are not able to take care of themselves. We find funding money for everything else, but the ones that need the money the most, or the help the most, not even the money, the help the most, whether we can direct them to other resources, but when they're out in the cold, you understand? And then the hearts of the city government is as cold as it is outside, that we don't care enough for the homeless. I have an issue with that. I have a major issue with that when we can open up one of these buildings, and then we can solicit the chief of police to see if, even if you need to secure, I'll come out. I'll bring the F four R, the fruit of Islam, out as well to secure the building if that's an issue there. You understand? But I think that we need to start focusing in on those individuals, especially in inclement weather, and they're not able to take care of themselves. And please don't tell me that it's nobody else's business because you all consider yourself Christians. And I just wonder what would Jesus do if he saw somebody out there doing what we see these homeless people doing, but we all profess to love Jesus. I have an issue with that. I have an issue with our hearts being so cold and our pockets being so closed that we can't open a freaking door of a building and let people from the cold on the inside, whether we like the individuals or not. I know they smell. I'm out there with them. I know they have mental issues. Then we'll have somebody there that will control to secure the apparatuses of those individuals. We got to have a bigger heart than this, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. The other piece, I'm so thankful to our city manager. I say this because y'all know we've been at one another for the most part, but I want to say unequivocally that I don't fight you if I don't have a reason to fight you. I want to thank the city manager for, y'all probably make the appointment because I've been knowing it so hard, been driving so hard, and the community want to say a resounding thank you to our city manager because I was told by the Board of Commissioners, Rodney McCord in particular, that the city, the Board of Commissioners do not choose police chiefs, that the city manager does. And I am so thankful to our city manager, I guess under your guidance, but that remains to be seen, that we have given our brother Homer Dayu a position as Assistant Chief. I'm so glad, I'm thankful, and I'm honored. And then we have Connie Sampson as our Chief of Police. Now, what we're doing is we're saying that we're more inclusive. It's beginning to look a little bit like more one Griffin. We got a lot of more work to do, Miss City Manager, Mayor, and the Commissioners to bridge the gap of equality in this city so that Black people in particular, I'm not talking about Hispanics, I'm not talking about Indians, I'm not talking about Asians, I'm talking about Black people, African Americans, whatever you want to call us, you understand, can feel as though that we are finally being included. So I would ask the city manager, I would ask you, Mr. Mayor, and those of you who make the decisions to look outwardly again and identify some Black candidates that we can put in direct positions if a position happens to come. And if these individuals are qualified for the position, then I think that we should at least bridge the gap with sixty percent thereabout of the population that are looking like me. So at least city government should be somewhat reflective of the citizens that live in the city. Anything less than that is going to cause us to have doubt there again. So, Ms. O'Connor, thank you very much, ma'am, for what you have done for me personally, and I pledge to you, because I've been on you a lot, but I pledge to you that we begin to start bridging the gap, working together on a couple of issues, because I see now that your heart is going in the right direction, and I want to thank you for that. See, one thing about Ray, when I'm on somebody, I'm on you for a reason, and then when I start seeing change, and I think that we should reach out to the community and let them know that it may not be where we want it right now, but at least we start seeing this thing move. So Homer Dayu is our Assistant Chief. I am absolutely honored and glad that y'all made you, ma'am, because y'all say y'all didn't do it. You, ma'am, made that decision. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody else on my right side who'd like to come forward? Last call. Anybody else in the room who'd like to come forward? Thank you all for your comments. Moving into public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comments on specific advertised issues such as rezoning ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. First item is to receive comments regarding a request for a special use permit for the expansion of a non-conforming structure within low-density building B for property located at fifteen fifty-seven West Pomper Street. Chad Jacobs will address. Public hearings, public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. For public hearings related to zoning, including amendments to the Unified Development Code or quasi-jurisdictional decisions as defined in Article Four of the U N C, all persons who wish to address the Board of Commissioners during the public hearing must sign up via the sign-in sheet that is over here on the right side, on my right, your left, providing their name and address and whether they are for or against proposed zoning or quasi-jurisdictional decision. So at this time, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing for Agenda Item Number Two as noticed in the agenda as follows. Receive comments regarding the request for a special use permit for the expansion of a non-conforming structure within low-density residential B, L D R B, for property located at fifteen fifty-seven West Pomper Street. Copyright copies of the adopted standards governing the exercise applicable to the application, applications factors for consideration, and procedures governing the hearing are available to the public. Speakers are responsible to establish establishing a record through the presentation of facts and supporting documentation or other evidence for consideration by the board and for review of appeal if applicable. The Director of Planning and Development, Chad Jacob, will address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
As indicated, the applicant Rafael Gonzalez is seeking approval for a special use permit for property located at fifteen fifty-seven West Pomper Street to enlarge a second dwelling unit on the property from three hundred and sixty square feet to at least six hundred square feet. This is located within a low-density residential zoning district, which is a single-family residential zoning district. Unfortunately, this property was one of the properties that was struck during the act of God, the tornado event on January twelfth of this past year. The house was hit so severely that it had to be demolished. And so Mr. Gonzalez is in the process of looking to rebuild that structure, but he would like to build it a little bit larger than the original three hundred and sixty square feet. Since this was two single-family dwelling units that were located on, that are located on a single-family residential property, this is considered a non-conforming use. The only way to expand or enlarge any type of non-conforming use or structure would have to be to go through this special use process. That's why we're going through this this evening. So that's the reason why he's having to go through this, to rebuild it at a larger footprint. Staff is recommending conditional approval of the request with the following conditions. The new structure must be a single-story dwelling, not to exceed one thousand and thirty-seven square feet. That's because the principal structure that's already on the property, the other one is of that size. So we don't want the second one to exceed that. Second, the new structure must be a single-family dwelling. Third, new structure must be built on or near original build location. And finally, the new structure must meet side and rear setback and architectural requirements for the low-density residential B zoning district. Planning and zoning met last night, actually, to hear this application, and they did recommend approval by a five-oh vote with staff conditions. However, they did ask to add one condition with respect to requiring paved driveways. However, I would counter on that, that it's not a necessary condition to be added to this since it's already covered within the L D R B zoning or zoning ordinance under Section seven oh six point ten. So thus, it's not necessary with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, we will call persons who have signed up to speak in favor of the applications, beginning with the applicant. Those in favor of the application will collectively have ten minutes to speak, but the applicant is permitted to utilize all ten minutes or to reserve time for rebuttal. Any remaining time will be divided among anyone else who has signed up to speak in favor of this application. So at this time, is the applicant. Is the applicant available here tonight that wants to speak? Have they signed up? Okay, that's fine. And we've got no one that's signed up for. The proposal. And then at this um in terms of opponents, at this time, we will call. Persons who have signed up to speak in opposition of the applications, opponents will likely have ten minutes to speak. If more than one person has signed up to speak, the ten minutes will be divided among them. And at this time, no one has signed up to speak against the application. But this time uh. Comments and discussion by the board, if any, will be reserved until the item is called for consideration. However, does. Anyone from the board have any questions for staff, the applicant, or the speakers at this time?
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the driveway that the planning was on it? Why why would it be obtained?
Uh one member uh requested it uh felt that the uh. Since the driveway hasn't been paved uh and previously in the past, we wanted to see it to be paved, I'm moving forward.
So there any more with the building to go on?
It's an old, these were older structures that have been there some time and so they haven't been paved. Obviously, it has to be paved at, you know, at the right of way point. Uh that that's a part of the driveway code, uh but that was uh their point of contention. But that's already covered under uh the L D R B uh requirements.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Thank you. This concludes the public hearing for item number two. Item number three, received comments regarding a request for a street renaming of Cabin Creek Drive to Haskell Ward Drive from North Sixth Street. To the existing portion of Haskell Ward Drive. Director of G I S, Brian Haynes will address. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. An application was processed. For Commissioner Rodney McCord on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, for the street renaming of Cabin Creek Drive to Haskell Ward Drive. From North Sixth Street to the existing part of Haskell Ward Drive. For the ordinance, the application fee of a hundred and fifty dollars has been waived. Uh due to the application being initiated by a city commissioner. A justification letter was submitted by the Griffin Spalding County School System. With its board and full unanimous support of the street renaming, citing the tremendous impact Mr. Ward has made on the city of Griffin. Through his philanthropic work, leadership, and business acumen. Which has brought our city national and international recognition. Moore Elementary School, which is located on this street, was attended by Mr. Ward himself. Mr. Ward says that his success in life can be traced back to there. A petition containing a map of the area of Cabin Creek Drive to be renamed and distributed was uh sent out. And we collected the required number of signatures and it was submitted to the G I S department. We reviewed the street renaming requests for continuity and found there to be no issues. We sent agency review letters to the fire chief, the chief of police, the city manager, Spalding County Sheriff. E nine one one and the tax assessor's office. All returned confirmations of support of the street renaming, with the exception of the tax assessor's office, which did not respond. An estimated cost of the sign creation and installation was calculated to be two hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety four cents. Also, per the ordinance, this fee will be waived due to the applicant being a city commissioner. G I S staff finds that all criteria of the street renaming ordinance has been met and recommends approval of the request to rename Cabin Creek Drive to Haskell Ward. Drive from North Sixth Street to the existing Haskell Ward Drive. There any questions?
Any questions from board members? Okay, go ahead and drive.
Isn't this um Cabin Creek Drive named after uh the first black school supplement school in Georgia? Looked it up online and that's what it's.
Sure that.
You look up Cabin Creek, it was the first. Yeah, and the first. All black school was named Cabin Creek.
It was, it was the first black. And high school.
High school and all and kids from around the state came to it.
And it was uh it was sponsored through uh. Cabin Creek Baptist Association. A group, a group of black churches. And and that school burned down Cabin Creek did. And that's how you got Moore Elementary. Because one of the teachers, because of one of the teachers that was named there. It's a part of history, what I'm saying. Because that's how it came about. It's just not a name. You got history. And you know, no, no, nothing against uh. Mr. Ward, you know, you know, he didn't really. He didn't do it in life, but some history he wants to. Especially in that area. Where our family, family and and Moore's are and stuff. That's just some of the history. I mean, you look at. I just had a lot of educators to tell me. About that situation. I know we had people kind of issues before. But um I had a lot of educators and they were uneasy. Name was named after one of the teachers. That taught at Cabin Creek. Who was on that class.
After the school burned down.
Burned down.
They renamed, and they came back to rename the school.
Yeah.
But that had had really, as far as I'm concerned, the the. School has nothing to do with the, I understand the history of the school. This is the city of Griffin Public Street.
I know it's a city of Griffin Public Street, but it also a part of history. That's what I'm saying. Some history needs to remain. I consider it being historic. I mean, it's a street name. It may not mean a lot to. And and know the history of it and still live there in that areas, you know. Where Fairmount was, Paulville and all of that. That whole, I can remember some of it, but not that it doesn't say, you know, that was a long time ago.
All of that street is already named Haskell Ward. That's right.
Mr. Mayor. You're you're really debating emotion that you haven't gotten to yet. This is a public hearing.
Okay.
So you might as call for a public comment. And then when you bring up, I think it's agenda item, what's it? Going down there ways.
Okay.
It'll come back up and they they can debate the merits of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Ryan on his technical side?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so this is a public hearing. At this time, um you don't have to sign up for anything. You'd like to come before the board and make a comment statement for or against. That's sort of off on my left side. Would anybody like to come before the board? Good evening. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Shaheer B Y and I live at eight eight twenty pound drive Griffin, Georgia. Uh I didn't have an idea that this was on the agenda. I apologize for that. But uh. First of all, I love Haskell Ward. I I shook his hand uh just the other day at Coach Good's funeral and told him how I felt about it. But Haskell Ward never lived on Cabin Creek Drive. Uh and and he, matter of fact, uh he's credited for living in that area, but that was according to him himself. And according to people that know him, that was for a very short period of time. And so I think that uh uh. As as Commissioner Curtis just said, this is a a a historical uh. Situation. This is something that 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 should be discussed. Did anybody on the board? Or anybody that's naming this uh that want this named after Haskell Ward? Did you refer, did you? Contact the people in that area? Did you talk to them? The people that once lived in that area, born and raised in that area? Many people that lived in those apartments, I forget the name across the street from Moore that were torn down are still living. They're still in Griffin. Have they even been talked to? And so I I I personally think that. If anything, this should be tabled. Uh when it come, when it, uh well, not tabled, but it should be more consideration before we vote on this, before. Or we allow something like this to happen. And I also remember certain commissioners on the board right now. Say they don't believe in, uh uh including you, Matt Matt Holbrooke, you were once said that you didn't believe in naming nothing after nobody. And one other commissioner there uh turned down voting on something uh uh naming a street after somebody. So I just think all this should be taken under consideration. We just do things and don't consider people. And I just really wish we would stop that. That's really, really doesn't make any sense. Consider the people. Uh you consider, uh you wouldn't do this on the other side of town, just jump up and name something after somebody. And and uh don't even consider uh what are the people wanting or not. So I like, once again, I apologize that I didn't realize this was on the agenda. I would have been more ready, more prepared to say something even more. But I could uh totally agree with Commissioner uh Curtis that we really, this is something that really. Uh we don't, it is, it's a no brainer. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh Mr. Ray. Is there anybody else on my left side like come before the board? Is there anybody on my right side like come before the board? Welcome back, Mr. Mahoney. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Three, Lam forty three, Spring Creek Circle, Griffin, Georgia. I want to, I want to um. Beat back off of what our Commissioner Curtis. I've said, I think it is a, it is a trosity that we would like to serve the historical precedent of that historical area. Without going before the people to ask the people their opinion. We can no longer allow seven people to decide what's going to take place in this city. And we have nothing to say about that. It is insulting and I am, I I I am absolutely pissed off that we have not gotten with that area over there. And ask them, what do you think about the renaming of a street? You understand? Because there's still living people that benefited from there. Moore's Elementary School, we can say that Moore is the school. But yeah, it is. Moore was a black school. And and Mr. Ward salute, bro. You understand? But and to, if we're going to uh disrupt. The histor- the history of a whole district over there, then I think we should hear from the people whom are going to be affected by that. So I have to say, thank you, Commissioner uh Curtis, for looking out for the people business.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there anybody else on my right like come before the board on this matter? Is there anybody else in the audience who like to come before the board on this matter? Anybody else on the board? Staff that has been, uh Commissioners need to ask. Brian, what?
I got one.
Yep, Brian.
This name is going to be changed where there's a curve, right?
It starts at North Sixth Street and runs to where the curve is where Haskell Ward is already.
Is there any other roads in the city that's had the curve and then the road changes names?
We've not had a road name change.
Not a change. I said where the road changes name. Like North Fifth Street curves into Jefferson. That's a curve right into a different road. It's the same type of curve.
Right. I I don't know anything specific, but there's plenty of places in the city where road names change several times in the middle of the road. Whether it's a curve or whether it's straight, it happens.
Okay, so there's actually not a reason to do this then if we still have others. That's the same way, right?
That's not up to me to answer.
Putting it out there.
Okay, anything else from? Thank you, sir. Alright, moving to the consent agenda. We've got items four through twelve. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So. Mr. Tinsley with motion, second by Commissioner Murray. I'm four through twelve. Um all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero on the consent agenda. Alright. Item thirteen is to, under regular agendas, consider a request for a special use permit. For the expansion of a non-conforming structure within low density residential B, L D R B for property located in fifteen fifty seven West Papa Street. Do we have a motion to approve with the uh four conditions or anything else you want to add? Okay, so. So Commissioner Murray made a motion approved with the four conditions. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item fourteen is consider a request for a street renaming of Cabin Creek Drive to Haskell Ward Drive. From North Sixth Street, the existing portion of Haskell Ward Drive. Commissioner Ward with motion, second by Commissioner McCord. Just a quick question, Mr. McCord, um. Being the sponsor of this. Do you have any concerns in regards to the historical nature of being named Cabin?
I don't, well, knowing all the people that. The school, uh the school system unanimously. Five zero. Went along with it as well. Everything was properly, got signatures, every- everything.
The other board member have any question to comment? You call the question. All in favor of the renaming, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like sign. Go forward for the reapproval. Commissioner Wright, Curtis and Tinsley voting against. Item fifteen is consider a resolution to amend City Griffin's fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four operating capital budget. For second quarter housekeeping amendments in the amount of one hundred eighty seven thousand, six hundred ninety seven dollars and thirty eight cents. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item sixteen is consider a path or form to the master service agreement between City Griffin and Paragon Consulting Group in the amount of twenty eight thousand. Eight, I'm sorry, twenty four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for contract management. Repairing repair plans, adding in temporary shoring, providing construction cost estimates. And debt administration for the bridge repair at Papa Street. Commissioner Tinsley motion, finish the Murray with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero on sixteen. Item seventeen is consider master services agreement with me first. Lowest quote not exceed ninety eight thousand, four hundred dollars. For employee uniforms within public works, solid waste and water wastewater. Commissioner Ward with a motion, same by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item eighteen is consider resolution authorizing the two thousand twenty four mayor, W S S Holberg. Renaming Jessica Connor, city manager. As the two approved signature in relation to NEAG, City Griffin, full competitive trust. Ms. Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item nineteen is consider resolution accepting easement agreement whereby the city would obtain a permanent twenty. Twenty foot easement totaling four hundred eighty one square feet. Together with the right to construct, operate and maintain a sanitary sewer line and manhole. On or over the partial common note in sixteen eighty nine. Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, currently owned by Saint John Lutheran Church of Griffin. And authorizing the city manager to record easement. Easement agreement in Park of Superior Court, Spalding County, Georgia, record. With Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Tinsley. On the resolution, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Is seven zero. Item twenty is consider commercial real estate land lease between City of Griffin and Irish City Lot LLC. To lease the parking lot located at two oh two West Solomon Street. For purposes of public parking and community events in the amount of two thousand four hundred dollars per month. Ms. Ward with a motion, Commissioner Murray with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item twenty one is the appointment of mayor, where is designated to Greenberg's Regional Commission Board of Directors for the length of his. In her term of office to succeed Mayor Doug Holberg, whose term expires twelve thirty one twenty three. I'll reappoint myself and continue serving in that capacity. That is our agenda for tonight. This time, uh city manager.
Uh, thank you for today, I know it makes a very long day, so thanks for bearing with us. I do feel like we got a lot accomplished and looking forward to working on our twenty twenty four C Y goals, and we'll have those sort of better defined into all of you, so you've got a copy of them. Also, a huge congratulations to Michelle Haynes, very well deserved award for the, you know, strongest link in the chain for the year. That's a big deal, and she certainly deserves it. And I, I think I saw a lot, saw a lot at this point today, done.
Mr. Whala, thank you for being with us today.
Enjoy being with you today, y'all did good work.
No comments. Ms. Curtis, throwing in the spots. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to say?
I'm doing it.
You're good.
I mean, I'll do it, I mean, I, I don't like the way that vote went, but okay, you know. I just don't like the way it moved, because I don't think I went to North Zone, you know, and I don't think that you didn't come out that area or being so much of that student.
Your votes. Thank you. Ms. Murray.
Congratulations, Michelle. It's been all the pressure, the work that you've been through, everything that you've been, very, 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 great job, thank you, just one thought for today. That's all those comments.
Thank you. Mr. Tinsley. Congratulations, Michelle. Brian said to say, behind every good woman is a good man. Oh. He still owe me that. Mr. McCord.
None, none at this time.
Um, I, I too would like to thank yourself for congratulate you for all that you do. You go beyond, above and beyond what you have to for that, I thank you. Um, I think we had a fair, fair amount of workshop today. Basically, our, the goal were just continuation of a, a lot of the work that we have done over the years. And I thought, I, I felt that it was very well put together. We were very well informed, and I appreciate staff, everybody, what, what y'all did to make that happen.
And got notified today that our National Guard unit here in Griffin will be deployed somewhere in the Middle East, Africa area. And so they will be deployed on, we'll be having a celebration for the community on Wednesday, March thirteenth. So we'll get more information, we show our appreciation, they'll be deployed for approximately as well. Heads up on that. Other than that.
Mayor, may I say one more thing, I'm sorry. Ms. Thornton with D C A sent you and I an email earlier this morning that they are working to deploy the C D B G disaster relief funds that were allocated after last year's tornadoes, so they were going to be scheduling a meeting here in Griffin soon with all of the communities that were affected by the tornadoes for unmet needs and future mitigation. That's a lot of money that could come our way, so that's a big deal. They're asking to have it here because we're a central location and we were disproportionately adversely affected, unfortunately. So we will schedule that meeting, and as soon as I have that date, they're looking as early as next week. So we'll try and coordinate with everyone and let you know when that, that will be, because that'll be a big deal for us. Sorry, thank you.
And some allegations, just a response, my point, Dr. Jones, in regard to the fifteen hundred account, the two hundred utility bill, I had an open records request, I don't believe my emails. I've provided everything that had nothing to do with that, no one has called me, no one has texted me, no one has sent me an email on the matter. I did have an appointment set up with an associate of yours on Friday to discuss the matter last, quite a week ago, and at this time, she has not rescheduled that appointment. So as always, I have an open door policy, discuss any concern, no ma'am, this is my time, but I don't have any. But.
You might not have it.
Okay, so that being said, do we have a motion to return? Before the motion, second by Commissioner Tinsley.